Everybody, please rise for the prayer. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in this decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Now, the pledge. Pledge allegiance, flag, United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, just. Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilor Leahy, Councilor Mercia?
Here.
Councilor Melonazo?
Here.
Councilor Nun?
Here.
Mayor Sumeris?
Here.
Councilor Cirillo?
Here.
Councilor Conway?
Here.
Councilor Elliott?
Here.
Councilor Kennedy?
Here.
All right, we have several moments of silence. Councilor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to request that the chamber be docked in memory of David J. Cunningham, Sr. David J. Cunningham of Lowell, formerly of Lexington, passed away on Monday, September 24th, 2018, in Boston. With his loving family by his side, he was survived -- he was the beloved husband of Marsha Cowdrey Cunningham, who survives him. David was born in Lowell on November 22nd, 1944, to the late Joseph A. in Virginia, Pinkerton Cunningham. He was graduated from Lowell High School in 1962, where he was a member of the Boy Officers Regiment and engaged in multiple sports. He was a graduate of Lowell Technological Institute, which is now the University of Massachusetts in Lowell, and in 1987, David was awarded the Robert Watt Fellowship at Harvard University. He was retired from J.C. Higgins and Encore Company, and before working at J.C. Higgins, David was a business agent of Boston Local 132 Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Union for many years. He also served as president of the Lowell Central Labor Council and as a member of Local 537. David was a political and community activist. He served for 10 years as a trustee at the University of Lowell and more recently on the Lowell Water Board and the Lowell High School Building Committee. He was appointed to the city's water board in July 2018 by Lowell City Manager Eileen Donahue. David's application for the post reflected his view of the importance of public service when he wrote, "When a member of the community serves on a voluntary board such as this, they do so, I believe, not for the income but for the outcome. With this in mind, I would humbly ask for a chance to pay back to Lowell some small portion of all it has given to me over the years." David was also a member of the Harvard Club of Boston and a former member of the Lexington Historical Society. In addition to his wife, Marsha, David is also survived by his son, David J. Cunningham, Jr., of New York, his stepsons, Dr. Brian Hearn of New York, Michael Hearn of Cape Cod, and a stepdaughter, Megan Nodjucks, of Connecticut. He is also survived by his brother-in-law, Richard J. -- by his brother, Richard J. Cunningham of Pepperell, and his brother-in-law, Kevin McGuire. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence and dock in chamber for Gloria J. Sacarelli-Leahy. She was the widow of the late city councilor, State Senator Daniel P. Leahy, ESQ, with whom she shared 57 years of marriage before he passed away in 2016. Gloria was raised in Lowell, where she attended area schools, graduating from Lowell High School with the class of 1951. After graduation, Gloria headed to Washington, D.C., where she lived and worked in civil service jobs, but most notably, she was an airline stewardess for American Airlines for several years. Despite the time and energy of raising six children, Gloria was an active member of the community. She was a practicing real estate agent, president of the Lowell Lawyers Wives Association, a board member of the Lowell Association of the Blind, and the Merrimack Repertory Theater. Perhaps her greatest joy came from working diligently with her husband and family over the past 40 years to support the ministry of their beloved friend, Father Gregory Ramkisun, and the children of the mustard seed community in Kingston, Jamaica, formerly known as Celebration of Life. Gloria was known for organizing stuffed animal drives in the greater Lowell area, which benefited hundreds of children in Jamaica at Christmas time. Gloria was an avid Lowell City Council watcher and a proud supporter of her son, City Councilor John J. Leahy. Her humble, kind spirit and contagious humor will be remembered fondly by her family and many friends. May I add that she was the greatest, most beautiful inside and outside person. She was a class act, and I admired her immensely. Gloria is survived by her two daughters, Kathleen Ramirez and her husband George Linda Kudnaw -- Kudnaw -- Kudnahowsky, and her husband Nels, and her three sons, Daniel P. Leahy II and his wife Joyce, City Councilor John J. Leahy and his wife Joni, and Maq A. Leahy and his wife Leanna, and Gloria's 11 grandchildren, her beloved sister Donna Nolan. Gloria was also predeceased by her son, the late Francis X. Leahy, who passed away in 1965. We offer our condolences to her family, relatives, and her many friends. She will be truly missed, and I'd like to offer a moment of silence and dock in chamber to all those who have passed away since our last city council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Elliott?
No one could have said it better than Councilor Mercia, but I just wanted to add just a couple of words about Gloria Leahy, and Councilor Mercia hit it all. She was a class act. She was. She was humble. She was kind. You always feel welcome when you saw Gloria -- Gloria Leahy. She had a heart of gold. I used to see her frequently, having coached two of her grandchildren for many years, but I've never had -- never heard a bad word. She would never say a bad word about a person, and I think, you know, at the measure of an individual when they leave, their grandchildren and their grandchildren, and she left a wonderful, wonderful mark with all of her children and grandchildren.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could I please just say this name once again, Niels Kudnahowsky, because we practiced it so much this afternoon, and I messed it up, so his name is Niels Kudnahowsky. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Thank you. Thank you. Now, for the minutes. The Minutes of the Cannabis Controls Subcommittee of October 9th, Municipal Facilities Subcommittee joined with Lowell School Committee, Facilities Subcommittee, October 9th, and City Council Meeting of October 9th. I need a motion to accept the place of file. So moved. By Councilor Kennedy, second by Councilor Cirillo. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If there's no objection, I'd ask -- I'd like to ask for suspension of the rules by general consent in order that we can hear a brief report on the upcoming Town and the City Festival, which will take place here in Lowell.
As a will of the council? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Town and the City Festival will be a two-day music and arts festival that will take place at various locations in Lowell, at different event spaces, bars, cafes, and galleries throughout the downtown, on Friday, October 19th, and Saturday, October 20th. The festival celebrates the spirit of Jack Kerouac in direct and indirect ways. The festival is being organized and promoted by Chris Porter, a Lowell native. Chris Porter has over 30 years of experience in the concert industry, and over 20 years of that experience has been focused on programming and producing festivals and special events throughout the United States, including events in Seattle, Denver, and San Francisco. This weekend, he is coming home to put on the first -- a major, first-of-its-kind music festival in venues all throughout downtown Lowell. And Chris Porter is here in the chamber this morning and, I mean, this evening, and so if there's no objection, if you could just say a few words.
Thank you.
I'd appreciate it.
Chris Porter, welcome.
Thank you. I'm very honored to be here. Thank you so much for the extra time here. Councilor Kennedy pretty much said it all in a nutshell. I work on a lot of festivals all over the country, but if I can take what I've learned over 21 years of that and bring it back to my old hometown, which means a lot to me, it's very, very special. As you mentioned, the nine -- one thing that's really key on this festival, it's patterned off a number of other festivals that happen in places like Austin, Texas, Boise, Idaho, Knoxville, Tennessee, other parts of Europe, where different venues in the towns are engaged in different businesses, so it's sort of a walking, venue-hopping kind of experience, and also something in the fall, when there's a limited amount of festivals in the New England area. I hope this is a celebration of Lowell, in addition to a nod to the spirit of Jack Kerouac, but I also hope it's a conduit to bring people into Lowell, whether we're talking about nationally recognized talent or people in the whole region to enjoy Lowell and enjoy the music and art that's here. It's October 19th and 20th. If you wish to learn any more about it, we have a website, thetownandthacityfestival.com. We also have this really cool -- I have to brag about it because I'm really impressed with this app that we have. You can download that on the App Store and learn all about the festival. You can go to one individual show if you wish, or there are also day passes. It's wristband, and you're able to hop around to different venues, so there's different ways to do it there. So please, I invite you all to join us this weekend, and it is a festival that I intend to be an annual one as best I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions, further questions? All right, thank you. Next, we have communications to the city manager. Motion responses. First motion responses, 15 minute parking at 435 MacArthur Street. Councilor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Natasha. Did you contact the people at the Olympia and talk to them about this, or you just made this decision to do one?
So, no, I discussed it with the parking directors, Nick, the previous parking director, and the new parking director. The concern was that it would be difficult to -- is this -- I don't know. Okay, I can hear it. The concern was that we would be giving up two metered parking spots. Initially, when they gave me the cost estimate, it was about $200 per, but when they delved a little deeper, it was more like $500 to $1,000 in revenue for the city for each parking spot, and it seemed like that might not be the most judicious thing to do.
So they're getting one. That's okay.
Yeah, that was -- I thought -- we thought that was a good compromise.
Compromise, yes.
And it's kind of difficult to fit it in there because of the bus stop and the metered parking.
Sure, I understand.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All set. Any further questions? Thank you. Next, we have motion response, settle street one-way. Councilor Mercia?
Thank you. Again, did you talk to the residences, like about nine homes on the street?
So, no.
So how did we determine which way we're going one-way?
Well, I thought your motion had that in it.
I didn't specify. I said, "Leave it to the discretion of the residents."
Okay, I guess I maybe I misunderstood, because I thought the question was the discretion of whether or not it was going to be one-way.
Well, it is going to be one-way, is it?
Yeah.
But it wasn't up to me to make a motion and decide that?
Yeah, okay. I -- so my assumption was that the issue was cut through traffic, and so I assumed the -- no, I did not contact each of the residents on the street. Would you like me to do that? The 60-day trial hasn't been put on the memo yet.
Well, I'd like them to be notified first and see if it's okay with them.
Oh, okay.
That it was that direction. If you look up my motion, it says, "At the discretion of the neighbors."
Yeah.
It would never be at my urgent, because I don't live on that street.
I think I just misunderstood what you meant by that. I thought you meant the request was at -- that they had requested you to make it one-way.
No.
So that's my misunderstanding. I'll contact them and clarify.
Well, there's nine houses on the street. Three had an idea to do that, but with this, another six more people, I thought it would be their choice, not mine, or two people or three, so.
Okay.
If we could just contact the people on the street and ask them about that and tell them that this was the best way to do it, according to your professional expertise, and if they're all right with that, so that's the only reason I'm saying that.
Sure.
I'm glad that it's going to go one-way, so I'd just like them to be aware of it. I don't like to spring things on people.
Right. Yeah, the -- I mean, the only problem I could foresee is if four residents wanted it one direction and five wanted it the other, there might be a problem there, but I'll contact them and we'll see what.
But I think if you can explain to them that you think this is the best route to go, I think they'll take your word for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. All set. All right, the next motion, upkeep of grounds at school buildings. Councilor Melonazo?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to table this response, and I actually spoke to City Manager Donahue and Assistant City Manager Kara Keef Mullen, and I'm just looking for additional information. It just wasn't what I was looking for, so they're going to get us additional information. So if we can put it on a table for this night -- for this evening, and we'll get additional information.
No problem. Thank you. Councilor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that's a good idea as well. I guess I assume that the reason that the motion was filed in the first place was to see what the plan would be for the upkeep of the grounds going forward, because you do from time to time get complaints about different schools and about -- and the grounds are not kept up. And so it's fine to understand who's responsible and how it gets done, but that doesn't tell us how often it gets done or if there's a way to improve the current system.
Madam Manager?
Thank you, and we will reach out to the school department. You know, when there were several calls, especially over the latter part of the summer, where schools seemed completely unattended, and the concern was, was this city or parks department that was tasked with doing that? And the answer was, no, it is the school department custodian, but we will speak with the superintendent as far as a plan going forward in terms of regular scheduled update, and we will come back with a more full report from the school department.
All set. Councilor Elliott?
So is that the issue, that the school custodians saying that the parks do it, and parks saying that?
No, I think the school custo -- the school admits that, or agrees, that it's the custodian's job to maintain. Depending on the school, there may be some adjacent city land, but by and large, the school property is maintained by the custodians. I think the issue is what schedule of maintenance is there, especially over the summer months, and that's something that we need to work with the school department to make certain that they're maintained on a regular basis and not just once every several months.
Okay, and I guess my further question is, I mean, I'm sure there's some maintenance of effort that the city applies when it comes to net school spending?
Well, not -- I guess if their custodians are doing the work, then it would be under their budget, but the issue is, you know, we need to work together to make sure that the schedule is sufficient to keep these schools in good condition year-round, as far as the outside work.
And that's what's going to be forthcoming?
That will be -- we will work with the superintendent.
Okay.
We did call it to the attention of the superintendent, and she was new and tasked with a number of chores, but that was something that she, you know, we will work -- continue to work with them on.
Okay, thank you.
All set. Councilor Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. The custodians, they do work during the summertime, don't they?
That's right.
And yet, we don't have students, you don't have to worry about taking care of, for the most part, each room, so I would think there'd be quite a bit of time. As we all know, in the summertime, the grass doesn't grow as much, and I would think that they would be able to maintain them certainly a lot better than they do now. And I know that I've had people tell me that they've had friends come in, take a look at homes in the area in Lowell, and then, of course, naturally, families want to gravitate to the school and see what it looks like. You know, one individual said, "Is this school still open?" I'm not going to name the school, but is it still open? He said, "Almost looked like it was abandoned." So, again, I think that we have sent letters, if I recall, to homeowners with, you know, their area, their grass, and so forth, perhaps not being maintained, and complaints in the neighborhood, and yet, here we are with our schools not maintained. So again, I'm looking forward to the --
Yeah, we will do that. You know, we heard, especially during the summer, that there was an issue of equipment and what equipment was not functioning. There were a number of things, but again, we will work to have a regular schedule and come back to the council with a more full response.
Thank you.
All set. Thank you. Thank you. All right, next, we have information reports, relocation plan approval. Ms. Councilor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. I know this isn't up for a vote for the relocation plan approval, but is there a relocation plan that was approved? Because I -- what is the relocation plan?
Yeah, there is, and the Assistant City Solicitor has been working with the relocation specialist. What -- the copy of the letter that we sent references a plan, and that's what had been previously sent to the council, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Keef Mullen to answer your question.
Sure.
So I think if you -- do you mean the actual location, has that been?
No, I mean, what is the relocation plan that was approved and who approved it?
So, that is what was submitted at the beginning of August, I believe. I think it was like a 121-page report that we had given you, plus an addendum. The actual costs, we won't know until probably six months down the line, when they'll have to have contractors who specialize in, you know, the estimates of the equipment and provide quotes and all of that.
So what is the?
So we don't know where they're moving to.
Well, what is the purpose of this being on the agenda for? What are we -- what is it doing here? We're not approving it or anything, are we?
Madam Manager?
Yeah, let me respond. It was either a week or two ago, a question came up about the plan and whether, and I believe it was last week, whether the state had acted to approve it or not, and it was under consideration at that point. They have since, by the letter of October 5th, approved the plan that Peter Sleeper sent to them, and together with the addendums. So simply to let the council know, the question was raised, do we know when it will be approved? Will it be approved soon or not? So the letter from Maggie Schmidt indicates, which we -- was emailed to us last Thursday, that the state did approve the plan.
So Peter Sleeper, the attorney for the doctors, he approved a plan?
No, no, no. Peter Sleeper is the consultant representing the city.
Okay.
Who, under the statute, General Law Chapter 79A, has to submit a relocation plan. And then the dentists have an opportunity to reply to that, which they did in September, and then the Department of Housing.
The dentists replied to that in September?
Yes.
And what did they say? Did they approve of it too?
No, they had a different version, and that's all in the digital copy, but we can -- we sent it out yesterday as far as the original plan and the addendums. The addendum includes what their -- the dentist relocation expert, Steve Malika, submitted. It also includes the response from Peter Sleeper to their response, which is what is required under the statute, and then it's up to the DHCD to approve the plan under the statute. So they have approved the plan under the statute, but again, as was mentioned previously, the actual costs in terms of the relocation costs, we won't know what those actual costs are until they move, but we're required at this stage to submit a relocation plan for the Department of Housing and Community Development to approve and then monitor.
Well, I would like to have seen it, not on my email, but in, you know, physically hold it so I could read it, and I also would have liked to see what the doctor's attorney has said.
We'll give that -- we'll have him print it for you so that you can have it in your hands.
Yeah, so if we could see that, that'd be great.
But yeah, there's no vote. It's just simply an update for the council that DHCD did take action on the plan.
Well, it's an update on paper that I haven't even received.
Well, we --
And I haven't seen it, and I haven't seen what the dentist's lawyers have said. I haven't.
We did receive it.
Well, I didn't see it. I don't know.
Okay.
We'll get that. We will get that to you with the dentist's response as well.
I would like to see it. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Elliott?
So could you just refresh for all of us, including the people at home? The process is this. We have to submit a plan, and part of that plan included a number of options to the state on options of similar -- that would be similar.
Proposed potential sites.
Potential. Potential sites, potential offices with parking, et cetera, et cetera. We don't know whether the dentists have accepted.
No.
Agreed or not, but this is the first step.
Correct.
What if they come up with another option that might be more suitable to them?
And that will be a word.
That can be submitted to the city. Okay, and this is where the range comes in, because how many options? I forget. Is it -- was it six options or five included in that original?
And it could be something apart, of course.
The number of options that we submitted to the state in this relocation plan, was it six or seven?
I think it was six or seven.
Okay.
The options.
And does that account for the range and relocation costs, or are we just responsible for -- we're finding them options, hopefully that they will work?
Right, and they may choose other. They may choose to go together. They may choose to go apart. Some may choose not to move at all. That's all continuing, and that's yet to be decided by them.
Okay, and they have seen this relocation plan that has been voted to them?
Yes. And they have their own input, so as I mentioned, their relocation expert responded to what the city sent, and that's what's required under the statute.
Right, okay.
And then the DHCD decides whether they make any change to the plan, and they approve the plan that the city submitted, but of course, it's going to have to get updated at the point of relocation. It's something that the statute requires in a period of time prior to any vote for taking, and so that's what we're complying with, the statutory requirement. But the actual cost can't be determined prior to the taking, of course, because they still own the property, so they won't relocate till a later date. And that's also part of the suggestion in the plan, which is several months into the year 2019, and could be beyond based on potential settlement.
Thank you.
Councilor Melonazo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question to the city manager. Did you provide a copy of the approval letter to the dentists or to their relocation specialists? Because I see our consultant was copied. I just didn't know if the consultant for the dentists was copied.
We can check. We included the copy from the state to us. I assume that they sent the same to their consultant, but we'll confirm.
They do say they included their information in the approval from Stephen Malika, the relocation strategist.
Yes, that is their consultant, Stephen Malika.
Right. I just think as a courtesy, we should have sent to him as well.
Yes, I believe DHCD would have done that, but we'll -- I believe DHCD would have done that, but we'll make certain.
Okay, thank you.
Council Kennedy?
So, just to summarize, every member of the city council was, received a copy of the plan back at the end of August or early September.
That's right.
The plan is over 108 pages in length, or over 100 pages in length. And the only reason it's on the agenda tonight is to inform us that the state has approved the plan that was submitted.
That's correct.
All set. All right, next is the Markley Generator operation. We have some speakers. Clerk, please call.
Jacob Fortes?
Eric Schlegel is going to speak first. He's the one providing the informational update. Is he not speaking tonight?
Well, you're registered to speak, whoever's registered to speak will speak at this point.
This was out of order from what I was expecting. I was expecting you guys to get an update from Eric Schlegel first regarding the notification that was in there.
If you prefer, we are, when we have people come to speak before us, we have them speak before the council have a discussion on it. But if you prefer to sit down?
Just because I'd much rather hear what he has to say first, just because there's been a communication breakdown between the actual residents that have been making the complaints and the city of Lowell. So I'd much rather hear the presentation first and then-
All right, have a seat, please.
Thank you.
Well, city manager, please.
Thank you, this is in response to a previously filed motion. And in the report, as the council can see, that the staff from Development Services did visit the Markley site to observe the operation of the generators and to discuss the issues. And Mr. Schlegel can report, he was there in person, and he can report to the council what the findings were.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. I attended, I attended the inspection of the Markley property with Sean Machado, who's the senior health inspector, and Jose Negron, who is the local area building inspector. We met with Markley staff, they described the typical operation of the generators, which is that they operate one generator once a week for five minutes to make sure that it's running. And then, one, one day during the year, they have to operate the generators for a longer period of time to do electrical work on the, the electrical grid at the building. They indicated that that was four to six hours that's, was operated at that, during that one day. During the time we observed, one generator under operation, we located ourselves approximately halfway between the generator and Mr. Fortes's property, Mr. Fortes being the individual who had registered the concerns about the smoke and fumes from the generator, smokestack. We, when we observed the generator, the one generator operating, we saw minimal, if any, visible smoke and saw no, smelled no fumes from the generator. At our location, again, it was about halfway between the generator and Mr. Fortes's property line. I will note that on that date, the wind was not blowing from the generator to Mr. Fortes's property, so we moved from our location to a location that was downwind of the generator in an effort to see if that would change our observations. They did not change our observations, so downwind of the generator, we didn't see any visible smoke or have any, any odor that we could detect. In an effort to try to look at least a little bit, we had the Markley turn on the second generator, so both generators were operating at the same time, to see if that changed our observations. They ran both generators for approximately 10 minutes, so it was two generators for 10 minutes as opposed to one generator for five minutes, just for us to try to see if that would change our observations. It did not. We, so based on that inspection, we made the determination that there wasn't any evidence of a nuisance that would, would be caused from the generator fumes to an abutting property owner, based on our observations. As I mentioned to the city manager, we have been contacted by DEP, who has apparently also received complaints regarding these degenerate smokestacks from Mr. Fortes. And I had a conversation with the enforcing agent at DEP, who indicated, as I mentioned in the memo, that DEP is the entity that does have jurisdiction over those generators, absent the city's seeing some sort of public health issue that would cause a nuisance across property lines. Since we have not observed that, we don't have any jurisdiction over the smokestacks or the generators themselves. DEP indicated that they were continuing to keep an eye on it, they requested that the city inspectors continue to keep an eye on it to see if we observe anything different. So I informed the city manager that we would schedule periodic inspections to go out and operate, observe the operation of the generators, to make sure that it continues to be consistent with our original inspection. And we will attempt to have them inform us the next time they're going to do a long-term generator operation, so we can have an inspector out there at various times during that operation to see if they observe anything different.
Any questions? All right, thank you. We have registered speakers at this point? Again, please give your name again and address.
Yeah, sure. It's Jake Fortes, and it's 36 Iowa Street in Lowell. So there's some new faces here, and I actually thought I was going to make it through 2018 without having to come here, my goodness. I was really, really hoping. I'm very much, you know, disappointed in that, but here I am. So for the new faces, just to let you know, a quick one-minute recap. So Markley Group came to town, they got a 20-year tax break, and they wanted a street, they got the street. The council, the previous council said, okay, we're going to make sure that, you know, the corner of Gorman War doesn't flood. It's flooded many times since then, causing inconvenience to the neighborhood. George Alites, if he were here tonight, would say, oh, it's doom and gloom, we're painting a bad picture of the whole neighborhood and everything else. You know, every time I've come to speak before this council previously, a lot of promises have been made, and I have been fighting City Hall since then to get them delivered. You guys said that you were going to pave Prince Ave and Iowa Street. It's only after constant prodding are we actually getting Prince Ave paved. It's actually happening now. That was two years ago that we had this promise, two years ago, and it's happening now. I'm like, guys, we constantly are playing catch-up with the Markley Group. So they installed the diesel generators. I came before the previous council and said, listen, I think there's going to be a problem with the storage tanks being so close to the house. Nobody looked at the emissions coming out of these smokestacks that they were going to install. I thought that maybe they would actually look at the residential neighborhood and realize the downslope of it and install smokestacks that went above the property line of abutting neighbors. We're within 100 feet of one of the smokestacks, and according to DEP regulations and actually federal EPA regulations, they're supposed to have the smokestacks above the property line of the tallest building in the area. It's not higher than their building, and it's not higher than ours. Now, we've brought these concerns to the Conservation Commission recently, because they plan on installing 21 more, not just two more, 21 more. This is a residential neighborhood, 2,500 kilowatt generators. Those are going on the north side of the property. These were supposed to go on the north side of the property, but because of, you know, cost savings to them, they decided to put them on the south side where they actually abut residences. Nobody thought at the time to actually put some sort of fuel mitigation or a problem with it, so they used low sulfur fuel. I get that idea, crucials have to use them, but they also use scrubbing technology to scrub out the rest of the emissions that come out of them. Conservation Commission was a breath of fresh air a couple of weeks ago, when they had to go before them about the generators. They were concerned about the same thing I was originally, the tanks. I said, forget the tanks, the tanks are fine. It's the emissions. Nobody looked at the emissions. You're going to install 21 more, and you already have two there, and they're, every time they come on, they're asphyxiating the household. Now, I give the benefit of the doubt to Mr. Schlegel, that he said he stood where he stood. I wasn't home at the time that the test occurred, you'll hear from somebody else who was at the time. But basically, where he stood was on the Markley Group property. The smokestack height is above where he stood. The smokestack height is even with my house. That's where the winds blow it to, that's where it goes to. It doesn't go down, it stays up, but it stays in a pooled area. And when we lose power, which you guys have before you again tonight, you'll see something further down where it says about putting more power into the Markley Group, this is something that should have been done before they even moved into town. Our infrastructure on the south side of the city cannot support a data center. It couldn't at the time they came in, and we have constantly been plunged into darkness since they've come to town. We're now starting to fix this problem so that those generators won't run. Thank you for doing that. Please pass this tonight. Let's get more power in there so that we don't have to have them running. Their four to six minute schedule that they run, that's one thing. They do have to test it, I get it, load testing, it's required, it's a data center. I get it, they need to do it. Where we've come to an agreement after the Conservation Commission meeting and the planning board meeting, is that the Markley Group would reach out to their vendor, VHB, who is the one who designed those, and have them look at possibly doing something to either mitigate the fumes that are coming out of them, with carbon filters or whatever else, or raise the smokestack above the property lines, the heights of the property surrounding it. That is a sufficient solution. That's what I'm looking for here. And this report tonight, with all due respect to Mr. Schlegel, undercuts everything that I've done the past month and a half before the Conservation Commission and before the planning board and the progress that I've made. I really would like the council to adopt what the planning board and what the Conservation Commission have said, and really have them review their emissions that are coming out of it and put scrubbing technology in there or some sort of carbon filter to mitigate it. This is more technical than this council would know, but these are simple things. If they can afford to build a new building on-site, they can clearly afford to not asphyxiate the neighborhood every time their generators come on. The last time they came on, on July 3rd, they were on for a prolonged period of time because it was the hottest week of the year, we lost power, and they had them running for hours on end, and it filled up the entire house, because when it's hot, you want to open the windows. What came in? Their fumes. Four to six minutes is nothing. Four to six hours, that's not even the right amount of time, it's six to eight. So I mean, basically, what I'm saying is, I'm working with the Markley Group to get this done, but this, this report tonight doesn't help that. It is a nuisance for the neighborhood, and it needs to be tested from where we are, not below where the smokestacks height are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker?
Nancy Fortes?
My name is Nancy Fortes, I live at 36 Iowa Street, and I want to speak in regards to this letter that was just read to the city council. It states that a test of the generators at Markley was done on September 12th. I also observed this, I have kept a log of every time those generators come on and for how long. Now, there is a front generator that isn't too bad with its smoke and fumes, but the one that's closest to my house, and I see this, every time the generator goes on, spews black smoke, and it's on for the entire time the generator is running. And as my son said, that happened in July when we had a power failure, I had to shut the windows. I couldn't even open my windows because the fumes were coming in my house. They are coming in my house. You know, I wasn't notified of this, and I've been talking to the city at numerous times, and they say they're going to call me back, they don't call back. And Sean Shanahan, I believe was a code inspector before he went to Chemsford, he was in on this too, and he said he was going to have the generators tested and let me know. He never got back to me, which is what has been going on with the city. And the day that they came, September 12th, the senior health inspector, which was mentioned, and the building inspector, and Mr. Schlegel were there. I did not observe these three people, but I did observe the smoke coming from the generator, the stack. And I should think they would have stood by my house or up, where my property sits up from down below where the access road is. There was nobody up there, and this is where the smoke and the fumes are smelled, especially on windy days. And they seem to run them a lot on windy days, which makes the smoke come into, the fumes come into my house. In the letter that was read tonight, I knew nothing about it until my son said he happened to look at the agenda for tonight and saw it. So there again, I didn't know about this, and I've been told by various city officials that they would get back to me, and they don't. Communication is the key in this. If, if the city officials cannot communicate, I'm a registered voter, and I vote in elections, and I will remember this when I go to the voting booth. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Council Maricia?
See, I don't live there, so it's like I could probably not care about it because I don't live there. But if you did live there, you would know what they're probably discussing. And I'm going to say this, we have a bus route in our neighborhood many, many years ago, and it goes through a certain area, and it parks down the Inde River Road, this was a long time ago, and it would stay there for 10 or 15 minutes and just, you know, just sit there and idle and stay there. And it was their regular route, and that's what, that was the regular thing that would happen. And one day, a man called me up and he said, my wife has emphysema, and that bus just idles and the smoke goes in the house. And I called the LRTA and I told them about it, and they rerouted that bus, and it does it in a parking lot where no one probably notices the difference. But, so I can relate to something like this. I would just, and I'm not thinking that these people want to come out of their way just to, you know, spend time with us this evening. I would like to have a meeting, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the madam manager, with the Markley Group, this family, and, and the health, you know, the, maybe the code inspector, the health inspector, maybe Eric Schlegel, to get down and discuss this, to see what they could do to raise the stacks higher. I know it's going to cost money, but it's a million-dollar investment, and I think they've done wonderful for the city, but they've got to do wonderful for the neighborhood. And I think they've improved that area immensely. Why it's taken so long to pave the street, that, I did not know that. But, you know, plans are made, and people should be compatible to live together. I feel bad, and you would not know any of this if you've had emphysema or had trouble breathing. Maybe it would not bother me being their neighbor and having this smoke or whatever, but it's bothering them and their taxpayers, and they have a right to come here and speak, and I sympathize with them. So if we could just arrange for some sort of a meeting, maybe the Markley Group people don't realize what's happening, and I think maybe they could comply and help the situation out to some degree.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I have Council Millinazzo, Council Serrillo, Council Kennedy, and Council Conway. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. First of all, thank you for coming out tonight to speak on this obviously very important neighborhood issue. I would think it's more than reasonable for this council to support whatever our Conservation Commission and Planning Board are recommending as this development goes forward. And if we're talking about 21 generators as opposed to just two or three, it makes sense, as Council Maricia said, to get everybody in a room and talk about how we can coexist. So I think that that makes perfect sense, and I think that as a body politic, we would support what our Conservation Commission and Planning Board would do in honor to make sure that we don't lose sight of the fact that this is a residential neighborhood. And secondly, that obviously we need to do a better job communicating with our, with our residents. So, again, that goes back onto the administration, but again, I would look forward to a meeting like that and continue to keep everybody informed as to what's happening.
Thank you. Council Serrillo?
Yes, I was going, I'm, I'm with councillor, councillor Millinazzo. I would like to get a copy of the Conservation Commission report. And also, I don't see that in this report that the, that they meet EPA regulations and standards, this- standards. So I'm a little concerned with that. And has it been tested by the EPA for, to make sure that it goes by the EPA standards and regulations?
Mr. Mayor, my understanding is yes, but DEP and the EPA, they've met all of their testing requirements and permitting requirements with both the state and the federal.
Do you, can we get a copy of that?
I can certainly ask the Markley Group for it. Again, we don't have jurisdiction over it, so we don't have a copy of it, but I can certainly ask.
Okay, yeah, and I also agree with Counselor Melonazo where I would, I would like to have that meeting also with regards to the Conservation Commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
It was Council Mercia's idea, just to give credit where credit is due. Sorry.
Am I up?
Yep.
You're up. Okay. See, I've been at that house on Iowa Street, and that house abuts the Markley property, and there is almost no buffer whatsoever. You know, there's really not a backyard to speak of, so it's, you go out the back door, and there's a small porch, is my recollection, and then whammo, there's a, there's a little retaining wall, and that's the Markley property. I think that, you know, everybody in the city was happy to have Markley be here, and that's a property that had been vacant for many years and a property that did not lend itself to a lot of different reuses. So I think we were fortunate to have the Markley property, the Markley Company come here and occupy that property. At the same time, we have to be aware that it does abut a residential neighborhood, and it's a residential neighborhood that didn't have the Markley property for a good, for a good number of years. And so, you know, life was maybe better than, than the way it is with the Markley property. And I think that the Markley Company has to realize that, that they need to be good neighbors as well. But it seems to me that there must be some common ground. And I can remember one, one evening, we had a, we had a subcommittee meeting out on the street in front of, if you remember that, it was a summer night, and we had the meeting right out in the street with, with the neighbors. And anyways, I just think, I think that it's good to get those reports, but we should refer this matter back to the city manager and see if, see if you can find some common ground with the, with the Markley Group and get, so that we can have the residential neighborhood and the, you know, that, the, and the Markley Group, you know, working together and have, and create some harmony over there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I think we're all, basically, we're all on the same page here with this situation. And it's a shame that we have to have residents come down here, and apparently, it's not the first time they've been down here, obviously. I think that where Counselor Kennedy just mentioned, that you have to have some common ground here and to get all the players together and to figure something out. And when you have the Conservation Commission, you know, saying that there's, there's issues there, and I've worked with those, many of those Conservation Commissions over the year because I, I was a Conservation Commissioner, and I think it's so very important that we take a very good look at what's happening in the neighborhoods, and this is a, this is obviously a real, this is a real problem. And, and once again, it's a shame that they had to come down here and, and come in front of the City Council to get, get something done. And that brings me, I think, to one of the most important, one of the most important things that have been said tonight, and that's communication. Once communication breaks down, then we have a real problem, and I think that you can see here, we've got a situation, and it compounds the problem. Instead of people getting back to individuals or department heads or wherever it may be, and I think we have to, we have to really stress that because we don't, we don't want to have to be dealing with, with problems like this when they can be taken care of at actually another level. So again, I look forward to everyone getting together here and making this work, make some sense out of it. Thank you.
Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think both speakers spoke, I believe they spoke at the Planning Board and Conservation, and both body have heard them. So I guess, you know, as a council, I hear my, all my fellow councilor basically support the decision of the Planning and Conservation Board. I think from, from here on out, we need to bring the Markley and the resident together and sit down with the manager, staff from the manager office and try to correct this issue. The testing shouldn't have to be doing, shouldn't, it cannot just one-time testing. It has to be a number of time testing. Maybe also work with the master DEP as well to not only see that their testing result that, that they met the, the emission requirement, but also to see how often they, they get, they test the Markley. It's not once a year, you know, really, especially these two individuals that spoke, they, they live right there. I mean, Council Mercia is correct. We don't live in the backyard of the, the generator, so therefore, we don't know what it feel like. So the least we can do is adopt the recommendation of the Planning and Conservation and working toward, to try to resolve this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Manager?
Thank you. We will certainly follow up with the Conservation Commission and Planning Board to provide the council with whatever action they've taken. I don't know if they've taken a final action on this or not. This is a, Markley is before them now, my understanding, because they're looking to expand, as was mentioned here tonight, and so there are public hearings ongoing in and around that. Is that correct, Mr. Slagel?
Yes, the Markley Group is proposing a new, new building, as Mr. Fortes mentioned, along with additional generators on the property. They are currently undergoing review by the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board.
Yeah, which is appropriate at the city level for, for the, the, you know, Markley Group to come to the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board. As far as the permitting, as was mentioned, that's done by the state and federal level and, and oversight, but certainly, we have some, you know, involvement at our local board level. So we will communicate that. I'm happy to talk to the residents at 36 Iowa Street in terms of communication. I don't know what happened before, but going forward, I know, I think Counselor Leahy brought this up. As a matter of fact, I did speak to him today to see if he wanted to, us to have this when he could be here, and he wanted us to move forward with it tonight, so. But he, you know, asked us to go out and check it out, and that, that was the point of the, of the response provided tonight. And so, but this, I think, has to be a continuing work in progress, not just because of the current conditions, but the proposed expansion, which I think it's in everybody's best interest, particularly Markley, to work cooperatively with everybody. So we will, I will get your contact information in so that we can have a more direct connection.
Yeah. Council Kennedy?
Just so, just to formalize it, so I would, I would move that this matter be referred back to the city manager, along with the recommendations from the, the Planning Board and Conservation Commission, and that's in a matter of time, report back to the council with a solution.
Thank you. All right, regarding these reports, I need a motion to accept the place on file by Counselor Elliott and Counselor Mercia, second by Counselor Mercia. Next, 3.3, we have Communication Point Kathleen Cullen Luter to Board of Health. I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
By Counselor Kennedy, second by Counselor Noon. Roll call.
Counselor Leahy, Counselor Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Melonazo?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Mia Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Cirillo?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Next, we have Communication City Man, yes?
Mr. Manager, I believe she is here this evening, if the council wanted to.
I'm sorry. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Cullen Luter, and I just want to take this opportunity to introduce myself to you all, and thank you so much for the opportunity to serve the city. I'm a lifelong resident here. I work as a healthcare provider in the city, function on many public health groups on a volunteer basis, and I'm excited to get started. So thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, next, 3.4, Communication City Manager Request Out of State Travel. Motion to adopt.
So moved.
By Counselor Kennedy, second by Counselor Noon. Roll call.
Counselor Leahy, Counselor Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Melonazo?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Mia Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Cirillo?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, votes from the city manager. Vote, authorize city manager execute an MOU with the city engineers. I waive the full reading and second reading by title. Authorize the City Council to ratify and approve the execution of city manager of the memorandum of understanding between the City of Lowell, Lowell Organization of City Engineer covering the period of July 1, 2018 through June 30th, 2000, through 2021. I need a motion to.
So moved.
By Counselor Kennedy, second by Counselor Melonazo. Roll call.
Question? Question? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Apologize.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On, on page two of, of the agreement, item four, emergency weather stipend, again, it might be included in the collective bargaining, the bigger bargaining agreement, but is there a minimum? If they, if they get called in due to a weather issue, do they get a minimum of four hours or? They talk about the $5 per hour stipend for supervisory spotting work, but do they get a minimum of four hours?
I'll refer that to the solicitor.
The, excuse me, the minimum of four hours in other overtime provisions would be in the, elsewhere in the contract.
Yeah.
This was really intended to, whether on an overtime basis or a regular straight time.
Okay.
To bring a sense of parity for the engineers along with other employees that do receive a similar stipend. They're going to be performing it in a supervisory capacity, and, and so it's just a straight $5 an hour.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to, to the manager. So how does this compare? I don't have their contract in front of me. How does this compare to the previous contract we just approved for the superior officers? It looks like it's, it's, looks like it's a little bit better than.
It's the same. The, in terms of the salary, the wage package offer for the three years.
Okay, it's, it's a three-year.
Right. It's 2% retroactive for year one. That would be back to July 1 of 2018.
Of this year, right.
Year two, it's 1% increase on July 1, 2019, and then a 1% increase on January 1, 2020. And then in the third and final year, it would be July 1 of 2020, and the last percentage would be.
So it's 2, 2, and 2.
It's 2, 2, and 2.
In 2021, June 30th, there's one, there's the last percent. Okay. So when we went through budget deliberations, and there's no step rate increases in this contract for these, and there were no step.
There is a, there is the snow emergency spotter stipend, and that's to bring parity with other spotters. We're trying to achieve parity.
Okay, were there step raises in the prior contract? I can't recall.
There was one, yes, there was a step.
Not, not in the superior. I know for the sergeant.
Yeah.
In the last three-year contract that came essentially for, and I know that wasn't you, so my question is more to Connor, were there step raises in the last three-year contract? There were no. So for the last six years, there were no step increases. Okay. And I just also, what was my other question? Okay, two, so naturally, when we went to the budget, there was some dollar figure factored in. Is this affordable? Does this factor into our budget? We're not, you know, we're not going to be running into any deficits because, as we just heard from the prior finance subcommittee, you know, that the salaries are 80%, and is, I'm going to presume, it's 80, 82% on the city side. So I just want to make sure this is affordable in what we included. Do we include 1.5 in this year's budget to account for these raises for, throughout the city?
So I think it's about 1.6 that was budgeted. This is, this is affordable in, in the budget. Obviously, there are tight times, as we've talked about, and more challenges coming our way. We, we've looked at this very closely on a day-to-day basis. The offer on the table that's been accepted by the, this particular bargaining unit is affordable. We want to avoid any type of layoff, of course, or any, any other consequence if it wasn't.
No, I agree, and I, and I reported in the finance subcommittee, I think the contributing factor, you know, clearly the cost of salaries, and there are some other issues, some, some financial management, in my opinion, but at the end of the day, when your budget is 80%, you know, they're, they're looking at a significant deficit moving into next year, and it's, there's only one way to, to do that. You either approve contracts that are not affordable, that were going to require layoffs or not, and I want to make sure that we avoid this. And I do remember, I do recall the conversation and during this year's budget hearings and that this is sustainable because we're still going into lean years. I know the economy is doing well, but we have some fiscal obligations that I'm not, I don't want to be, sound like a broken record, but times are challenging. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure, and this is, and there was, the prior year, I know there was a year that the city employees took a 0%. So I think that's important. I think this is reasonable, but more importantly, it's affordable and it's sustainable, knowing what the challenges that we have, fiscal challenges that we have in other areas of the budget. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Roll call.
Sure.
Counselor Leahy, Counselor Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Melonazo?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Mia Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Cirillo?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, vote, authorize city manager to execute an MOU with Local 25332. Waive the full reading and second reading by title. Authorize the City Council to ratify and approve the execution of the city manager of the memorandum of understanding between the City of Lowell, Local 2532. Ask me, Council 93, covering the period July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2021. I need a motion to accept. By Counsel Conway, second by Counselor Noon. Any discussion? Counselor Melonazo?
I just want to inform the board that I'm going to be voting present. I have a family member who is probably one of the best clinical nurse managers in the city. Vote present.
Any other comments? Okay, roll call.
Counselor Leahy, Counselor Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Melonazo?
Present.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Mia Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Cirillo?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Next, 4.3, vote, authorize city manager to execute an MOU with SEIU Local 888, Chapter 159, Water and Wastewater. Waive the full reading and second reading by title. Authorize the City Council to ratify and approve the execution of the city manager of the memorandum of understanding between the City of Lowell and SEIU Local 888, Chapter 159, Water and Wastewater, covering the period of July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2021. Motion to, by Counsel Conway.
Second.
Second by Counselor Noon. Any discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Leahy, Counselor Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Melonazo?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Mia Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Cirillo?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Bye now with 5.1, Communication City Manager Request Approval of Constable Moons for Jose Dereno and Stephen Roulette. Motion to adopt.
Move to adopt.
By Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Cirillo. Roll call.
Counselor Leahy, Counselor Mercia?
Yes.
Counselor Melonazo?
Yes.
Yes.
Mia Samaras?
Yes.
Council Cirillo?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Elliott?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have a report of subcommittee, finance subcommittee, joined with Lowell School Committee Finance Subcommittee, October 16, 2018. Council Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The finance subcommittee met again this week, and we're going to be meeting every two weeks for the next time being to continue to talk about issues and the financial position of, of the school department and the city. We continue with the discussion on the deficit. I know there was a meeting last night, a school committee meeting, and they discussed the deficit. The deficit is 4.6 million on the city side. There have been some revenues that have come in, the additional money from the state of $1.1 million. There was hurricane relief that came in at one time. Commitment of 485,000 is also emergency relief of 572,000. So that helped the deficit this year, and it's been narrowed to $2.5 million, which the superintendent indicated that they have implemented a hiring freeze to, and they're going to be looking at other areas of the budget to try to reduce that. But as it exists today, 25% through the fiscal year, there's a $2.5 million deficit. And that's a structural deficit. And we discussed this at great length. There was also a discussion about the, some of the contributing factors to that, to that deficit. Transportation, not only normal, regular transportation, but also sped transportation is a large part of that. There was underestimation in the budget to the tune of 3.2 million. There were some other contributing factors of, including DCF placements as well as outer district tuition. So there were lots of, a lot of questions on exactly what contributed to that. More discussion about the offset and the fact that the city does have the obligation of paying back $2 million to the state. That hasn't been settled yet. The superintendent is still working with DESI to find out exactly what the terms of that. They're looking at, you know, four years. The state doesn't want this to linger. That's a real number. And so that's another $2 million that's contributing to that deficit. So, you know, the concern moving forward is certainly how they're going to close out this fiscal year. The budget is not balanced, and again, they're implementing a hiring freeze. We did ask for a report on those positions that have been filled to date as of January 1, principals, and then other administrative positions. So that information will be forthcoming. Presumably, we will get that information before the next meeting, two weeks from now. So the, you know, again, my concern, the concern of the subcommittee, is that structural deficit, not only this year, but moving forward. There are significant, there are contracts that are in place, again, 80% of the budget, and that is going to be the influence. So I don't know where we go. The city has given more money on our side. The state has given more money as well. And I think at the very least, if, according to this report, there's a starting next fiscal year without collective bargaining impact, you're looking at a $5 million, and including food service, another $1.06 deficit. So the one motion that came out of the meeting is, you know, the transportation issue. And there's been quite, you know, for quite some time, a difference of opinion on who pays for it, who manages the contract, and who bids it. And so we request that the city manager, look, what is the statute? What is the requirement? How do we control these costs? That's one of the costs that are seemingly out of control, if you will, if you look at the increases both in the special ed and regular transportation. So I, I think that's an important, that was a motion that we brought forward, or it's just a request for a report, quite frankly. So, you know, moving forward, in two weeks, we will look at some of those structural issues. How are they going to close the gap? I don't know, considering what is in place, and it's the school department responsibility. You know, that last contract that was put in place, it's a 9%. We just, we just adopted a 6% for three years. That is affordable. This hasn't been factored in, if you look at the deficit that are now in place. So I hope to, I hope to get some answers at the next meeting on exactly how they plan on closing that gap, where that money is coming from. Because the city is, the city is tight. The well is dry. And in my opinion, we'll continue our contribution. For years, we were under our net school spending. We're at 95, then we hit 100%. Then we're, we've exceeded our net school spending. And that, that's a big factor moving forward. If the legislature can provide additional funding, great. I don't, who knows where, you know, no one has a crystal ball. It's going to see if that's going to take place. But there are some serious challenges moving forward, and we'll meet again in two weeks. Maybe the superintendent and the school business manager will have some more direction moving forward for this fiscal year. But I think the transportation issue, we will sort, help to sort out. And I think that's, I think that's a recap of the meeting. So again, report of progress.
Thank you. A motion to accept this report of progress by Council Conway, second by Council Mercia. Thank you. Next, we have Wyandotte National Grid requests installation of electric conduit on Andrews Street for service to a monthly data center. I need a motion to accept and adopt. Copy and report by Council Conway, second by Council Noon. Then we have petitions. So, Sofa Narath Yem, Yem's Variety Store requests installation of a 15-minute parking sign at 742 Broadway Street. I need a motion to refer to Traffic Engineer for a report and recommendation.
So moved.
Council Mercia, second by Council Noon. Next, Universal Apartments Rental Incorporated for Benefits in Hilaire Soto requests installation of handicap parking sign at 19 Bowers Street, Unit 1. Motion to refer to Traffic Engineer for a report, recommendation.
So moved.
Council Noon, second by Council Conway. And finally, we have 7.3, Maxine Ward requests discussion regarding handicap discount at City Parking Garage. We have a speaker?
That's Maxine Ward. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. It got even more, originally, it was just that, to me, it seemed very, well, very discriminatory against, because it's called disabled parking. And when you get there, you find out, you can only get disabled parking if you have a handicap placard, which is only one type of disability. So today, Boot Mills is having their bridge repaired, and usually I could have parked in their lot. I am the major caregiver to my disabled daughter, and I am the guarantor, and I pay the rent at 141 John Street where she lives. I live four hours away in New York. I don't live here. But I come up once a month, maybe sometimes for a week, and for her, not, you know, not just to visit. I love Lowell. I think Lowell's great, but not just to visit Lowell, but for her. So what happened is that I, I'm 62 years old, so I should be eligible for the senior discount, because they're not going to give her disability parking because she doesn't have a disability placard, and she doesn't have a car. So I can't use her parking. And I can't use my parking discount because I, my registration for my car is in New York State, even though I pay a lot of money for rent at 141 John Street. And because there's no, like, a day pass for the parking garage, I could pay over $25 a day just going in and out. Because every time you go in and out, they charge you. So you could go 24 hours and park there for $11. But if you go in and out, you could really ring up a big tab. So I can't get the parking. This is a parking thing for Boot Mills because they buy so many, 150 spaces they contract for. But I can't get this either because, again, I'm registered in New York State. So it's been very difficult, and it's detrimental to somebody with a disability to not be able to have their caregiver be able to park in a safe parking place. So I'm willing to pay, first, it was like the $36 for the disability or the senior degree. Now, then it was $66 for the rate of the resident parking for downtown, and now it would be $87 that I would have to pay every month in order to park for, you know, maybe, maybe five days at the very most, but usually two or three days downtown. Because, and I, you know, I am her primary caregiver, but at times she might need a nurse. She does have a nurse that comes visits every week. She has a, anyway, the other thing I just wanted to mention, because I'm ready to cry about it, is I was told by one of the employees at the parking garage, if my daughter was really handicapped, if she was really disabled, she would have a handicap placard. And I really couldn't even answer to that. So that's my plate, is that I really, that's it.
Thank you. Well, I need a motion to refer to the city manager for a report and recommendation.
So moved.
By Council Kennedy, second by Council Elliott.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I support the motion, but Madam Manager, that's not the type of response that anyone should be handing out at the, or delivering at the parking garage. Could we address that? And that's, it's a contract. They're not, are they city employees? It's a contract, right?
We'll look into-
Not that it matters. My point-
We'll look into see. I'm not sure who Ms. Ward spoke to, but we will certainly look into that. That's not-
You know, I, on behalf of the city, I mean, this is embarrassing for someone to have to come up here on the mic and say that's how they're being treated. Regardless, that's, that's not the issue, and that's, that's not what we pride ourselves in. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? Thank you. It will be addressed.
Could I just ask Ms. Ward to give us your contact information? Maybe if you could give it to Kara?
I was just going to ask for that. Thank you.
Before you leave, we just want to have your-
Yeah. Thank you. Next, we have city council motions. First motions by Council Conway and Council Melonazo. Request city manager have the proper department supply safety flags to school crossing guard personnel. Council Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, we discussed street safety, and we talked about lights, and especially, of course, right around the school areas to try to make it as safe as possible. And again, I thought it was a great discussion. During that discussion, Council Melonazo mentioned, mentioned safety flags. And in the last, in the last few months, I've talked to some crossing guard people at the schools, and they were very frustrated. And when I talked to them after that meeting last week, and I said, Council Melonazo brought up the idea of having safety flags, and they immediately thought that that was a fantastic idea, and it certainly, they thought would make, make the area around the schools a lot safer for the children. So I called Council Melonazo, and I asked if we could put this motion on. Again, when you, when you take a look at the cost, it's, it's really very, very cheap to get these flags. And a couple of the crossing guards thought it was a great idea. Safety for them, too, because cars are not stopping. And if they see the flags, and apparently, as, as Council Melonazo mentioned, that it's tried in different places, and I did do a little bit of research on it, and I found that it's something that many, many towns and cities in particular utilize them, and they find them to be very successful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council Melonazo?
Thank you. I just want to follow up by thanking Council Conway for adding me to the, to the motion. Clearly, at last week's meeting, he had already put a lot of thought and effort into making sure that the safety of our children crossing at the school crossing, and the guards themselves are safe. So again, I appreciate being included, but I do think it's a good idea to look into the safety flags. Thank you.
Council Rowland?
Yes, I, I think this is a great motion. I think any way that we can keep our crossing guards and our children safe is, is a benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, by Council Noon, request city manager invite Justice Jay Blitzman of the Juvenile Court to the Public Safety Subcommittee to provide the overview of restoring justice program. Need a second?
Second.
Council Melonazo, Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I spoke to Judge Blitzman prior to filing a motion. He, looking forward to getting your invitation. While we had it, I thought maybe we also invited DA Ryan. You know, because this, this one of the program is very successful. It was established, I believe, in 2012, and respond to the increase in number of arraignment of juvenile relating to minor school-based offense. So in that program, it's a great program because then it make the offenders take responsibility for the offense, for the action, also listen to the victim, and also make amends to the victim and the community. This is a great project, and I'd just like to hear, you know, from the Judge Blitzman and maybe DA Ryan to see, you know, to get an overview, and also to get a, to talk about the success of that program, and maybe if, if anything we can do to help or partner with, with them in, in addressing some of the school-based offenses and stuff, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. Next, we have by Council Noon, request city manager have local police department, Lowell Fire Department, provide a report regarding officer time spent responding to any incidents at existing medical marijuana cultivation or retail facilities. Second, by Council Kennedy, Council Noon?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I am aware through the subcommittee meeting last week, chaired by Councilor Elliott, Cannabis Controlled Subcommittee, and the manager put together a, a plans in term of, you know, talking about the economic impact that, you know, these, the medical marijuana and/or recreational marijuana is going to bring to the city in term of taxes and revenue. Also talk about local hiring as well. So I'd just like to know to, maybe a report to see kind of like public safeties and economic impact. Was that public safety outweigh the, you know, the public safety impact? I mean, no, no, I mean, economic impact outweigh that. So like, just, just like to get a report on that. I know that in the subcommittee meeting, we talked about as well the, how, how well, while guard, while secured the facility is, and looking forward to any other facility that's coming forward, or company that's coming forward will, will meet that same standard as well. So a report on that's certainly helpful.
All right. You all said. Council Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was rather confused a little bit about this, and I don't mind anybody asking for questions, but I was at that subcommittee as well, and I don't recall, I recall the question about any incidences occurring. And from what I can remember, there were no incidences that took place there. So I don't know how we can look for something that never really happened, any incidences. And then we did learn about their security. And if you listen to what Superintendent Richardson said, is, I could go into the details about the security, but I, I think it's rather left unsaid. Just take our word that it's quite safe, and they have all the bells and whistles that they need without me divulging their strategy. And, and he went into a little bit of detail that seemed very, very good. Security is top-notch there from what he said, and I don't really want to report on that when it's so secretive that I don't think that we should be knowing it, if you can understand how I'm trying to say this gently. I believe that they're on top of it, the police department, and I think that security is top-notch without getting into the strategy here. So I don't know really what we're talking about with this motion. No offense, no offense, Vesna, but-
All right. Council Elliott, then Council Noon.
That's okay. Council Noon wants to respond.
Council Noon?
Oh, no, actually, there's no intent at all. I'm not implying that's an issue at this facility, the Patriot Care. I do not imply that at all in this motion. What I'm saying is that I just want to see, because I heard too, same thing as you did, that is the, the securities at the place is top-notch.
Yeah.
Superintendent Richardson spoke of that as well.
Yes.
But, no, for me, I just also, not, not so much for me and for the public as well to seeing that this economic impact, the local hiring, if there's any public safety concern, if there's any, this economic impact, and the local hiring will outweigh that, will trump that. See, that's, that's just what I like, just to get, just a report. I'm not going to say because of their security or the detail of it, they don't want to reveal it. That's fine. I, I have no problem for Patriot Care to hidden their, their logistic in term of security. No, I'm not asking for that, no.
Council Elliott?
The report we got from Eric Segal, he had not received any, but, you know, maybe the fire or police app. But my point was, at the meeting, we had discussed taking a tour for the city council. And it is, it is a secure facility, so the public can't go there. But I, I do think it's important, considering this is the first one, and it's been there for a couple of years, that maybe just to calm or quell any concerns that, that we do take a tour. Council Kennedy just told me he, he's been there. So I, I would like to, and maybe we can invite the media to join us, to reassure people at home that we're making sure that this is- at home that we're making sure that this is, it's safe, it's secure, there's, they're on premises 24-hour, there's videotape, they're connected with the police, just, you know, all of the precautions that are necessary, that people are asking questions about.
Council Kennedy?
Yeah, what I told Council Elliot is, I appraised that property twice. I appraised it when they first bought it, when it was empty, and then I appraised it a second time, maybe a year later, when they had, when it was in full operation. And then I was also there, I believe, a third time with the previous city manager for either a tour or ribbon cutting or something to that effect. But we, I believe we got a tour at that time as well. So I, I can tell you that the security there is, is A1, and with good reason. It's good that they have, they need to have that kind of security there.
Thank you.
But I also think, in terms of the motion, I think the intent of Council Noon's motion is, is because he thinks that there hasn't been any incidents, and so it's just to underline that, or to, just to establish that there hasn't been any incidences, incidences of problems at the property.
Thank you. Madam Manager?
No, just, just quickly, we can, we can inquire of the police and fire, as has been mentioned here, that was stated at the subcommittee, that they, they haven't had any complaints, but we'll make sure before we, we'll get back to. And we did reach out to Patriot to try and get some dates, so we'll follow up on a tour.
Good.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have a motion by Council Kennedy, require city manager instruct transportation engineer to report on feasibility of establishing no parking zones at certain intersections along Patagon Boulevard. Second by Council Cirillo. Council Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, during the past year, we've gotten up to where we're having maybe five, almost six, different ethnic festivals. The kinetic sculpture race is up there, and all of those festivals and events draw a large number of people, and therefore, a large number of cars. So that you've got cars parking on both sides of the, of Patagon Boulevard. And what happens with side streets, such as Dunbar and such as Chevrolet, is that because the cars are parked right up, right out, they park in the, what would be the breakdown lane, so that when you come out, as you try to negotiate your way out, there's, you've got no line of vision. So you, the hood of your, the front of your car has to be out in a lane that's a, that's a travel lane. And, you know, I think it's a very dangerous situation. So it would seem to me that it might make some sense, or that the traffic engineer may find that it makes some sense to have some no parking, maybe for, I don't know, 30 feet or 40 feet at each, at, at the point at which each of those side streets intersect with Patagon Boulevard, in order to create a line of vision, so that people can come out of those streets in a more safe fashion than, than what they do now. And, and the other, just as an aside, and it's not part of the motion, but I do recall that at one of the festivals that was held this summer, there were, there was a lot of people parking on the, where they have the carnivals on those grounds. And I think that's a good idea, but I don't know why that happened just one time. So it would be good if included in the report would be just how you go about being able to access, or have, be able to access those, those grounds for parking when those events take place. I think that would alleviate a lot of the, the parking problems that exist up there on event days.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion?
They should apply, it's part of the state, it's state land, so that's got to be included.
If we're talking about regatta field, I think it is state. But we'll, we'll get a report on that.
Thank you. All right. Finally, announcements. Council Mercia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I know we're going into executive session, and we need the proper vote, but I have an announcement, and I want to appeal to Team Lowell to help the Salvation Army and our city manager. Team Lowell is all residents in the city of Lowell. We need you this Saturday, October 20th, from 6:00 AM to 9, 6:00 AM until 3:00 PM. There is a challenge between Lowell and three combined towns, the three towns at Chemsford, Tinsborough, and Drakett. The three town managers are challenging our city manager, Eileen Donahue, about who can bring in the most people to drive a Lincoln in the Driven to Give Salvation Army Challenge. And we don't want the towns to win. We want our city of Lowell to win. We want our city manager to win. So please, 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 come down. We need your help to the Lincoln at Jarvis Lincoln Motors. Everything is free. There is no buying pressure to buy a car. They will feed you free. There is a chance to win a free fishing trip onboard Paul Belay's beautiful boat, the Janet Marie. So it's a good time for the holiday season, for people that don't have to give a dime. Just give of your time if you don't have the money. Every car that you drive, which you could drive at least two cars, money will go to the Salvation Army from the Ford Motor Company. And we can at least raise $8,000 from, from the Ford Motor Company to go to the Salvation Army. So there's a contest on, and we want our manager to win, so.
Thank you, counselor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and we do encourage everybody, including all of the council, to come down and drive as well. Doesn't take too long, and everybody out there listening, but thank you. The towns are ganging up on us, but that's okay.
So we need all, my colleagues down there to drive a car. It only takes 15 minutes of your time, and you might not want to get out of that car because it's so beautiful, but thank you so much.
Thank you. Any further announcements? All right. I need, I'll need a motion to go into executive session to provide an update to the council on contract negotiation with the Lowell Police Association and Local 853 International Association of Firefighters, the disclosure which would have a detrimental effect on the city's bargaining position, as well as pending litigation with Local 853 International Association of Firefighters versus the city of Lowell. Public discussion would have a detrimental effect on the city's position. So I need a motion to enter into executive session. By Council Elliot, second by Council Mercia.
Motion to enter into executive session and adjourn.
And adjourn from the executive session.
From the executive session from this meeting.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do we need a roll call for that?
Roll call. Sorry.
Council Leahy, Council Mercia.
Yes.
Council Melonazo.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Council Cirillo.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Elliott.
Yes.
Council Kennedy.
Yes. All right.
Next, by Council Noon, request city manager have Lowell Police Department, Lowell Fire Department provide a report regarding officer time spent responding to any incidents at existing medical marijuana cultivation or retail facilities. Second, by Council Kennedy, Council Noon.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I am aware, through the subcommittee meeting last week, chaired by Council Elliot, Cannabis Controlled Subcommittee, and the manager put together a, a plan in term of, you know, talking about the economic impact that, you know, these, the medical marijuana and/or recreational marijuana is going to bring to the city in term of taxes and, and revenue. Also talk about local hiring as well. So I'd just like to know to, maybe a report to see kind of like public safeties and economic impact. Is that public safety outweigh the, you know, the public safety impact? I mean, no, 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 I mean, economic impact outweigh that. So like, just, just like to get a report on that. I know that in the subcommittee meeting, we talked about as well the, how, how well, well-guarded, well-secured the facility is, and looking forward to any other facility that's coming forward, or company that's coming forward will, will meet that same standard as well. So a report on that's certainly helpful.
All right. You all said. Council Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.